You're also going to have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the March 14th, 2024 Plating Board Meeting being held here in this situation. What about?
So I don't know what this.
Um, we have a post your agenda is there is a section. Um, favor. And we are expecting somebody else. So here he is. Right over here. So at six thirty, you had a public meeting with the site plan review and the stormwater permit, but the common driveway, uh, lots of four, our lots, one each. I'm watching tonight.
I'm good. I'm Bill Armberg. I'm here with, um, I'm with Pete D of Congregate Consulting. And, and I, I know that there was, I don't know if we can make them, there were some, uh, there were some comments which he answered, uh, and which I could be a subject to speaking to Karen tonight, but still waiting, waiting for written, uh, response from, uh, our consulting here. But one of the things, and, uh, when Karen will get the, uh, it was our, the plan, the, the easement common driveway plan, which was kind of superimposed with vice stuff, so that was broken out, which I think, uh, makes it a lot, it's a lot easier to open that. So Karen, if Karen, if you want to, or if you want to, you can explain to me what that, that helping.
You're only talking what easement plan.
No, you can talk about the first condition.
About that chunk.
The second thing, easement plan, I gave you that because you really, you can really understand what's happening with the project with easement plan. So they can talk about the easement plan tonight because it really clarifies things for you. So you understand.
Fire department.
What I did even.
Yeah, please. And, uh, should we use the public discuss that?
We're gonna try something, are we on the correct, Karen?
I've got me enough.
Okay, so we're gonna try something which, okay, that was had our plans up here. Uh, I share my, uh, our stuff.
We do the fieldwork laser.
On the, on the right floor to see, um, do they like everyone here?
Who?
What question?
Well, last year. I mean, if you're gonna get it up, oh, yeah.
When you talk about this.
It was a separate folded thing.
Keep it all up.
Help me, Karen.
You have any time you can have.
No, it was really easy.
Yeah, you have it.
The wall.
Hey, give him that for coffee, yeah.
If they can have it used. Another. Yeah. All right, here we go.
Uh, so again, uh, good afternoon, board members. Um, so this, uh, this project, um, has been designed, um, lots one and two in tandem. Um, previously, we did lots three, four, and five individually. Um, in this case, we follow pretty much the same design as far as stormwater, um, stormwater goes. We have, uh, driveways with, uh, sand filters on each side. They go into, uh, underground storage basins, which store the water until it gets, um, discharged in a controlled manner, um, to where the water's going right now. Um, the easement plan that we have provided shows the, shows two easements. It shows the easement for the common driveway. Um, and it also shows drainage easements. Um, we have drainage easement, uh, on the storage basin next on, uh, lot three that serves lot three. We also have an easement, um, that serves lot one. Um, the locations of those were chosen because those were pretty much the only place where we can place.
Can you show us the public way the common driveway is?
The common driveway would be here at the bottom. Um, it is fourteen feet wide, uh, in accordance with the regulations. Um, that is required when you have three or more lots. In this case, we have two, but we kept the fourteen foot width. Um, we have shoulders, which is also a requirement on the, uh, common driveway. In the previous emission, um, we had, uh, some slope issues, which we already addressed in the revised plans that we had provided, and also a radii of the curbs. So that's pretty much the only difference that you will see from, on the common driveway on, between both submissions. Um, we had, um, we have provided a easement, uh, easement plan that was forwarded previously. Um, this plan will supersede that. Just.
Sorry. So the water's coming down. I know you're gonna get to that. It's going into that bottom area.
Yes. So there is a high point right around this area. So we have half of the water going this way and half this way. Um, this chain provides enough TSS removal, um, that will comply with the regulations of the WRPD, which we are partially. The infiltration area is actually outside of the WRPD. But sand filters and we have a water quality swale, um, and that will provide all the treatment that we need to comply with local and state regulations. Same design that we use for the other lots. Um, and, uh, yeah. Anyone has any?
Can you point to which infiltration areas outside the water resource?
Thank you. This dashed line is the WRPD line, and the drain easement, uh, encompasses the, the drain area. It's not shown in the easement plan, but that drainage basin is shown in the other plans. Just, just the information board is, uh, who explains this is one of the things because you always get with this common driving to, uh, who does what, when, and all this stuff. We've been agreeing on the someone's who goes, going to two houses, um, driveway. So it's one person who's gonna build the entire infrastructure in between.
At the same time.
It's the drain, drainage easement, just because it'll come off of what, what, when I go onto lot three?
Yes.
Um, when you revise this plan, can you please put the stone, could you put the wall in the, at the lower wood right away on the plan?
I will show it more clearly.
It's not clearly shown at all here.
Yes, the wall as it is right now existing is pretty much at the middle of the water quality swale. Um, the way we're grading and working this area, we're actually eliminating that wall and moving the headwall with it through the back. So we have considered all those, um, that area with the wall. So removing the wall will increase the site, uh, site distance coming out of the common driveway.
You're removing the wall that's part of the roadway?
That wall is within our lot.
Oh, check that. What? I think that was, that was needed for the roadway.
I thought that's some kind of bill.
I think I have a comment from the fire department. The fire department, um, they reviewed the common driveway and they find the width acceptable. So it's okay to be a fourteen foot wide common, um, driveway.
Isn't the wall holding up the building, I guess?
Yeah, and as part of, uh, the design, we need to cut that because the slopes here, in order to get there, we need to soften these slopes. And the way we have this, we need all the water to get that, down to that point. So that is, and it's not, it's not a digging of everything. It's a softening of the slope. So there's not much of a difference between the roadway and the slope behind it.
But from the wall, that wall was a big bone of contention.
Yeah.
Huge.
Huge.
Huge. And if you were really fortunate that you got the Form A on that because,
Yeah.
because of that wall, and there was never ever anything said that you were going to remove it. Ever.
I can review that.
Am I correct in that? I mean, this was.
I read it together.
And you didn't have access. You had the size and the frontage, but the access was illusionary. You went before the zoning board of appeals. You got your section six funded with your easement, which enabled you to get sort of with the cocking of the horse to get the A and R on lot number, whatever that is, one. And now you're telling us you're gonna take the wall down? Uh, this doesn't bypass the street face test. Sorry, it just doesn't. This is the person we heard that.
I've never, ever checked with the wall.
Never, never?
Do you mind?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't remember any, yeah, we talked about lack of access to get rid of that wall and the easement, but, uh, we, we, I, I think we need to go back in, uh, move it there.
Wow.
Thank you. Oh. Can't help the whole.
Yeah, right. It was necessary.
Yeah.
Had to have it. And again, it's a big question about whether or not you could in fact get that A and R. But because you can easement, it was a big discussion over this, which, um, one of our members, Peter Pritchard, and you keying on easement, the fact that it's being reported, et cetera, et cetera. Never was it said that you, if you had taken down the wall, then there would never have been a issue about access. So I don't get it.
But just, just so I understand, can be, with my own, uh, situation. The, the structure of what you're doing is the purpose of the wall, humorably, was to pull backs and stall, correct? And what you've done, oh, what the stormwater design is doing is changing, is changing the flow so that that is no longer an asset. And, and, in the comments, the consulting engineer, if I can recall, would comment on that? No, he just asked for more clarity on that. Okay, that's what I did. So, so what I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to ask, I was, I didn't want to back close on that. And so, but the point is, if it serves the purpose in the consulting engineer, if it serves, serves a purpose, then what is the, if the storm, the stormwater is complied with, and actually this serves to get the same purpose, what is the difference? I'm just asking.
You know, what the wall, the, don't, don't look wrong up. It's trans卡tting. We didn't, you know, we're not.
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying, but, but if it, if it works in the consulting industry, then.
Yeah, the key on this stuff, we don't like this stuff to come with the last version.
Well, that was shown on the plans that were filed in February, when it was January, whenever.
I, I, I didn't really look at it because the laundry list was so long of the items that they had to fix. I didn't focus attention on that aspect. The wall was put in with the original subdivision.
Right.
Now taking the wall out, I don't know. That doesn't, that doesn't seem right for the people who are living on Laurelwood. I mean, I think I'm gonna have to look and, and get a blow up to see exactly where that wall is.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at the rough understanding.
I mean, I'm sure the people who live on Laurelwood Drive now don't know that the wall is coming out or proposed to come out.
We need a little more clarification than at least. So we know, or I think I know, that when Mr. Brady sees our peer review, he goes through, he checks, he uses that as a quality control.
Yeah.
Was not on our quality control. So I think we need to go back over this step. Are you, you all stand?
I, like I said, I didn't really review it to the nth degree because the laundry list was so long. And, um, you know, they have submitted new set, but it's still under peer review. Okay. We do have our peer review, uh, person present tonight, if you'd like them to say anything. I mean, I just thought that this easement plan helps you guys understand where everything is. And I think that, I think that that has helped clarify things, but.
How?
Yeah.
Is Mr. Seller calling?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Seller. Can you hear us?
Hi, guys. Good evening. You're doing well. I'm, I'm Alex Seller with T E C, jumping in for Pete Ellison, who you guys are familiar with. Um, so I, I'm having a little trouble hearing some of you. I apologize. Um, it sounds like there was some question on the retaining wall.
Yeah.
Of it. Yeah, as far as, uh, the, for initial peer review, uh, when we reviewed the, uh, wet swale that was, uh, uh, designed so that it discharged to the retaining wall, and we just asked for some more clarification and maybe some consideration to, uh, look at the stormwater and to see if there's another avenue to change the location of the discharge. Um, as part of the, uh, the most recent submission, it appears that they want, that the, uh, applicant would prefer to remove that retaining wall and, uh, for purposes of grading and holding back earth as retaining walls are intended for, right? It, it appears to meet what, what the site is intended to do, referring function as a stormwater, uh, treatment purpose and grading. So as, and unfortunately, I don't have the history of the retaining wall that you folks have. Um, and, but as far as function for stormwater and grading, uh, removing that, uh, retaining wall is actually a positive.
It is an entire two, twenty, twenty-five foot sink.
Like what, what did I give Mr. Sellers?
Karen, so can, can we get a plan that shows what, what you, what you really want to remove? A clarification on that, you know, so that,
Yeah.
so that the board can.
Yeah, so it's right in the initials, submission.
Really see, see what, what they are looking at? And how is the outlet changing? The drainage, how is the outlet changing? So that, you know.
In terms of?
So you don't need the wall, what, what's happening?
Yeah, what's happening? So you don't need the wall with the drainage outlet? The wet swale.
Further treatment for the driveway.
And where's the, where's it outletting to?
It's outletting to the, right, where it's, uh, ending there where the stone is. Then it goes back into D P one, which is the design point that we use to do our stormwater analysis.
So all the stormwater staying on site, no, no, no increased discharge is going to the swell and Laurelwood Drive?
That is true. No increase in flow rate, no increase in volume.
Anybody else here?
No. So I'm looking at this, um, it may just be that this word is covered up, um, or maybe it's not. Yeah, here, I'm free. Any help?
So if you look at, whether it's a page.
Bunch.
And what a board.
And under, um,
and you have the six where it says the local speed. I think that word just kind of blanked out here.
On three.
I think it exists.
Okay.
Do you want me to put that up? Do you need that?
No, I didn't. No, I, I just wanted to help it. You know, you said removing, I just.
No, actually below, just below that, there is a call out that says remove, uh, retaining wall and headwall.
Yes.
And that believe, that actually is on the revised plan.
All right, so we don't see it. Okay, okay. So.
That was part of the clarification.
Okay.
So is the front face of the wall in the right away in the road?
As far as my survey shows, no.
Everything's all on this, uh, all on this property?
Just the section that we are moving is within our property.
And how long we said again, twenty-five feet, two?
Around twenty-five, thirty feet.
Do you, shall be hold on the walls now?
I do have a number, but it's length, length, considerable, yes.
Okay. Not all of it. In her room.
One, one thing I just bring up to fight clarification, that one of the original comments that Pete responded to was, is, um, under the bylaw says that common driveway is supposed to be, uh, minimum of fifty feet from an adjacent driveway or another lot. And at the closest point on this, it is, is fifty-seventh, okay? And, but as you, once you enter the right way and with the thing, and whether anything's actually built there, it is closer than that. But as we're spawning, if you, if you look at section seven, twenty point one of the bylaw, it defines the common driveway starts at the stream. All right. And so in other words, it's the, it's the layout, which is the focal point, not, not, not the, uh, favor.
So you're saying it's fifty-seven feet to what, um, this is not one, two, number five Laurelwood?
Yes.
Anybody else here? Now, go ahead. So this is not a public hearing, but we have people.
Yes, and it's, it's all about the, 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 the.
So, uh, if we have a couple of people in the group, please raise your Peter.
I just, I have a question. I'm in a bar.
If you wouldn't stand up, can I tell us your name and your address, please?
Sure. My name is Charlie Saludy. My address is forty-four, Burgrove.
In Citrus.
Citrus.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, as in a bar on the other side of Laurelwood. Uh, I just wanted, just a little clarification on the, on the stormwater and make sure it's not affecting our property. We already have a high water table there. Um, is this, and I know there's two houses that were, that are already built on Laurelwood, right, to the two new ones. Are, are we talking about those houses or are we talking about?
The children, the parents.
Two new ones.
Yes.
That I wasn't there on. Okay. All right. And I can grab, I can see the plans on, in the.
You can make a point. Come in the planning board office and we have the whole file.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Joe Bonner, Joe Sett?
I think he's just yet to leave.
Just yet, really. All right.
Well, hopefully we'll be getting a peer review soon for the secondary plan. And, um, then there needs to be more changes. Um, then we will address that.
Okay.
We have a common driveway agreement that I've already, the town council, um, you know, I just thought town hall should see this as, you know, to, as a new town council to tap to us.
Yeah.
Um, but it looks like it's in pretty good shape. Um, so, um, I can suggest a continuance to the, um, April twenty-fifth meeting.
Your, I know.
Um, so you can come and see what it's gonna look like, but, um, private stormwater permit, no water is supposed to be in construction, so I can go to anybody. When it does, you need to call it, let the town plan or not, it's updated. So yes, okay.
Would be kind of unusual if water went that other way.
Kind of, yeah.
That other way from, from this, come, from this site. I, it would be a little.
Be a little anomaly, but you will notice. Private changes to a strange fixed list.
Yeah.
To listen to the.
The surf, stormwater permit is for surface water. Okay, surface water.
The, 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 the. Okay.
Awesome. I move to continue the public meeting for the site plan, administrative review, common driveway, and stormwater permit at wall number lots one and two, number one and, and number three to April twenty-five, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M, and to continue the time for action following with the town court up to June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Through seven.
Second.
Karen, can you interrupt for a second? Is, is far as the stormwater administrative decision, uh, no, no problem with, and, and did you say April twenty-four, April twenty-five?
Twenty-five, twenty-four.
Okay, twenty-five. See, time for finally decision, though, is, you know, two months later is, you know, I, and we can.
We'll try to answer that. We'll try to get it done, you know, shorter than that. We, we make every attempt to, but, you know, if something ever happens, we, you know.
Thank you, Robert.
It's also assuming you're gonna be all settled for the next meeting.
Say again?
It's also assuming that you're gonna have everything settled for the next continuance. And if that's not the case, then we have to continue again to another time, so this allows an extra time and.
No, but if you continue till the next time, then you adjust at that point. The point I'm saying is we have a closing date set for June one, twenty-eighth. And so I, I have no problem. I understand that, you know, and these are, this is not a special permit or anything else. It's, again, I understand if, uh, you know, the continuance to the end, uh, in the May, file a decision. And the bottom line, I need more time, give me more time. But I, I just don't want to, four or five months in advance, be talking to the developer about, by the way, uh, you know, you, you gotta, whatever you guys are lining up here, you know, we're not sure.
Why do we say June fourteenth? Change it to June twenty.
I think the bottom line, that, that we're saying all the Ts have to be crossed and then all the Is dotted, so that when we come back in on the twenty-fifth of April.
We're all set.
We're all set to go. Ready for rock and roll.
Yeah, we're all.
So, okay, but it just, no surprises like, gee, we're taking down a wall.
Yeah.
amended to June first?
June fourteenth.
June fourteenth.
Is there a second amendment?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Um, I.
Everybody all at once. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks. Say before.
Before.
Yeah, pie day.
Pie day.
Did anybody bring us a pie?
They did, no.
I don't know how to bake. I know I would bake. Okay, spaghetti.
You can eat it right first.
Today's one. Lovely medium, huh? I can be bunched, I can be spaghetti, it's bunched.
No, we're not, we're like, it was not that. No, we don't.
You gave us right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's how much?
It's a discussion that you guys can be friends. Or sixty-one.
It's a moving by law, and, uh, we have a discussion involved, and the ghost place at sixty-one, we're everywhere. Well.
All right, so when you've reviewed the plans, John Chechen has reviewed the plans, they, uh, in order for endorsement. So you have a motion, um, for endorsement? Thank you, Joe.
All right. Thank you.
See you.
Yep. Yes.
Can you let Alex Mountie spread out?
He gets right.
Good luck. All right, we're all set.
We're all set.
Yeah, we're all set.
I move to endorse the site plan administrative review and special permit for mixed use building and mountain family building and stormwater permit in the village center and Nittany District, Rainbow Stateway District, New Driftway Transit Subdiveish Village Subdistrict, V C N G D G N D T V at sixty-one New Driftway, as all of the conditions required prior to endorsement have been addressed.
Okay. All in favor?
All right. And then we have the next one.
Hold on, a little discussion, a discussion about the ghost of the place for eighteen to replace.
I've reviewed the plans for eighteen to replace. They incorporated all the conditions, and so it's ready for endorsement as well.
Okay. I move that the planning board endorse the site plan for eighteen to replace in Citrus, Massachusetts, prepared by Grady Consulting, L L C dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, with revision through two twenty, twenty twenty-four, consisting of five sheets. Conditions and changes needed. Conditions and changes needed for endorsement have been added to the plan for the site plan administrative review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Rainbow Driftway, Gateway District, Rainbow Village Center Subdistrict, V C N G D G, G B C. The property is owned by David Larson.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Done.
Thanks.
Well, moving right on, old business, good business, correspondence, administrative updates. First up is M B T H community section compliance.
Well. We've been, we were contacted by the state that they, they needed a clarification in our stuff. So, um, our consultant clarified the, the districts and reclarified the compliance model that's been resubmitted to, um, to the state. Um, it was just a minor tweak. Um, we haven't heard anything yet as far as, you know, we submitted for preliminary adoption review. We've also submitted our two mandatory misuse districts, our 90 days is up on March 20th. Uh, and we've also submitted to the municipal law unit, um, they offered to review bylaws if they have time prior to your town meeting and let you know if there's a problem. We did that, we've done everything we can to try to, um, keep on top of this. Um, we're hopefully get some feedback in the next three weeks before town meeting, so that we can let town meeting know um, where we stand with the state. But, um, hope, that's where we are, hopefully, you know, um, it is coming through on grants and stuff, I mean, applications for grants for, that the town secretary is applying for. They, they basically are asking, do you have compliance? And, um, you know, it can affect a lot of money for this town. So, uh, I think, you know, I'm optimistic that it's going to be just passed very easily at town meeting.
So I think that, Karen and I, I got a, um, team tag on this, and I can speak, but Karen can speak, but she's a um, department head, so that we don't need a special permission here. We're hoping for this up in the our town. So, um, I'll do the same idea to Karen, we'll do all the serious stuff. The other thing too, that people, and I know we all understand this, this was back to, really, 2019, when we started on.
Goes back before that.
2006.
2006.
Also, every.
Right, and we are gonna emphasize that.
The Economic Development Committee started the process in terms of rezoning of Citrus. They were public carrots, all over there.
Right, right, and so.
Right, okay.
We're gonna emphasize that it started out as a village business overlay district first back in 2006. Then we went to, to Green Bush V C N, then we went to the North Citrus V C N. So we have been allowing mixed use and multi-family since 2006.
And the reality is, is the partner from Plymouth, said on the radio, he's the planner from Plymouth. Yes, and, and this has been stated before, we need to have this zoning, it doesn't mean that ultimately it will be built.
Right.
And I think that that has to be clarified, that it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be built. It just has to be on, on the books. Sometimes you have to be a little careful about people water over the line, you're doing it, if they're not gonna build it, I think it's.
I think that that's a kind of a. Well, I, I think that we, we, we say, you know, we, we've written up a draft statement, which I sent to everybody. And, um, you know, we say it's a zoning exercise, but you, the town said you'll change the zoning to get results.
That's right.
And so you are getting things built because you changed your zoning around your transit stations.
It was deliberate.
It was deliberate.
Absolutely deliberate.
And then the state came in and put their two cents in, and now we're addressing the shortfall from what we originally proved to what the state wants.
And it's very large, it's a very small.
Team, yes, housekeeping.
That's totally. So you think people will want, I mean, what? I feel like we did a housekeeping last time meeting.
We did one almost every time.
Yeah, it wasn't a big deal, it was.
No, I think, I mean, I think that.
I think that's why.
I think if anybody knows anything about it, they, they will realize that it is housekeeping. Um, so I've been supported, the advisory board supports it, you know, the more people who I talk to, you know, some other department head came in the other day, and they, he asked me, what's this thing? And, you know, because, uh, he says we technically have interim compliance now, because we filled out a form. And I said, well, you know, you need to vote for Article 16 at town meeting. You know, I don't think it's, I'm hoping it's not gonna be a big deal, several people have told us it's not gonna be a big deal. Um, so we're, we're gonna be prepared with a PowerPoint, but we're not going to do it unless we're forced to.
But some of the pushback is not necessarily on zoning that we're planning to do, or try, if you will. It's rather the state telling us what to do.
Yeah, that's.
That is the pushback, you know, who do they think they are, Home Rule, blah, blah, blah. But they do talk to us. Right, but here's the thing, what do they think 40 years?
Right.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
So. Now, people don't. No, but again, it's, I mean, I. But it's been around for 50 years, so they didn't give it away to tell us what to do. And that kind of stuff, yeah. So if we want the money, you have to play.
Right. Right.
Why not? And although we are an elected board, uh, Gavin was who, maybe who wrote, who stood who wrote over, but we want the money, so that's why we bring this. And that's why we did it.
Previously.
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 And that's why we got the 2. something million. Mass works.
Right, you got mass, have mass works, you know, with the leverage to projects, you know, um, you know, the town of Citrus is trying to be proactive. Or they were proactive before, and now it's just a housekeeping change to our stuff.
Not a big deal, not gonna make a big deal out of it, no.
Alright.
Alright. So we, we must have a lot of minutes. Minutes. I move to approve the meeting minutes from February 8th, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
And I move the minute, and February 22, 2024, second.
All in favor?
Bills, bills. We're giving away some money here. I move to approve the requisition of $130 to Horst and Witten for peer review services for 18 year place. For $594.50 to mostly Wittenville for peer review services for 334 Chief Justice Pritchard Highway. Lots, 2028, for $285 to Rockland Trust for attended, attended to C P T C Annual Conference. For $217.50 to Chester Consulting for peer review services for 61 New Driftway. $232.50 to Chester Consulting for peer review services for 194 Place. For $217.50 to Chester Consulting for peer review services for the residential compound on Countryway. For $3,960 to Tech Inc. for peer review services for Laurelwood lots one and two. For $2,600 to Tech Inc. for peer review services for, for 817, Countryway.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Moving right along to our liaison boards. Um, C B C was canceled. No, no, my, my. No, but it's like we're winding. Plus, everything's been pretty much done. Is town meeting the eighth?
Yes. Yeah, the 29th.
Sure, the rash. Two of them. Yeah, the 29th is for the school.
Right.
It's all special town meeting. Nothing's been going on in the building with conservation, we're still lacking in conservation, are we, sir?
No, we're not, okay. And, yeah, uh, Jennifer Smith was appointed as the conservation agent this week.
For the sheen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Your lights are. Um, any other ideas on it?
Nothing, no, we're, we're like, any?
I. Reintroduce somebody on the bike committee, I don't know, it was important, so I told me she wanted to come to city, I said, I was not my, maybe, she was someone of the people's. I said, why would you become employee, should we, we want some, I said, yeah, that's not actually Laurelwood, and I'd like to meet you, I'd like one of her of us. Um, and suddenly we have a buddy to go.
We remain busy, um, you know, the next meeting, we have accessory dwelling, we have 817 Countryway, and we have the stormwater permit for the tennis courts at the high school, so it's gonna be, oh, it's gonna be intense meeting.
Is there anything about the, um, 809 Countryway, or is that still somewhere else?
We received an opinion from town council that they need to apply for a limited site plan review.
Extended, no, yeah.
What they have not yet.
It's.
I'm sorry, that's not country.
Yes, yes.
On the other, um, we have a bit of any.
Yeah.
Um, it's interesting to see that enormous garage. That's not on the plan.
That was a stormwater permit.
Oh, it was? And how was it accessed, not from, not the way that?
It's, it's through the common driveway.
Okay. It's been huge.
I do a lot of stormwater permits that don't, that you don't, that, that are administrative review that don't, that you don't.
That you never see, yeah. That makes sense. But, um, we don't, you see everything. No, 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 I'm not, I'm just, because sometimes people ask me, well, I don't.
It's a storm, it's a stormwater permit.
Are they gonna put an accessory park in the moment, because it?
No, it's a bar, it's a bar.
It's a bar.
A bar.
Right.
Well, at 7:15, are we ready to, um? After some. I'm not waiting, um. So next time we also have to sign the other, um, town report. And if, if town meeting is the eighth, do you wanna cancel your meeting on the 11th?
Can, but we don't, we can't. I know, what is, what is on the gun, of course.
Right now we haven't scheduled any.
They'll let it go.
They'll let it go. So that's, you know, that's my preference, I mean, because you'll have to be in town meeting on Monday night, so.
And maybe even on Wednesday.
Maybe one night. So, so cancel that, we'll cancel the meeting on the 11th, and then we have two things, um, April 25th as well.
So I'm not gonna be here, but I will soon. Soon, soon. I'm, I'll be for you. But I, but at April 25th. Our next meeting, I will cancel, but I will. Move in. Okay, it's two weeks we have that, didn't we?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yeah, that's, this is my, I'll have my next, yes. I'm gonna have to drink coffee. Why, plus he asked me to, he told me he'd be fresh. I mean.
Yeah.
Anything else? Make a motion to, to.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.